The camera and I could slide.
We're rolling?
Um, yes.
You hear a motion?
Sure. Uh, motion is I move to reconsider the select board's prior vote to approve the fiscal year 2026 municipal budget so that board may reopen the full budget for further discussion, potential revisions, and revote before submission to the town meeting.
I'll second.
On your favor.
Mr. Chair, um, so the finance committee doesn't have a quorum, uh, which means that they can listen, but they can't take any votes. I don't know if Glenn or...
Leonard Leon is supposed to be coming. One of them is. I don't, we haven't talked to them. Chris was supposed to, but Chris asked me to stand in for him. So I'll act as on his behalf. We won't deliberate until we have a quorum.
But we can get your input.
Yes, I would say that would be okay to do.
All right, well, who wants to start? We're gonna go through it item by item. We're gonna go through it by major changes.
Mr. Chairman, maybe we should go through it and see what has changed, no, which changes.
Good.
I can move out if you would like.
Thank you.
Um, so you'll see, and this is the document that was in your packet at the last select board meeting. Um, so nothing, it's the exact same document. Uh, so you'll notice that at the prior meeting, you guys had discussed, um, not funding the select board budget. Um, so that is, I changed that to $3,000. Um, so that's changed. Um, some of the other changes, let's just go down here. Um, we kind of mentioned it at the last meeting, where the debt numbers, um, we've gone through that with a fine tooth comb, um, cleaned that up and made it more accurate to reflect what we actually have for debt, which between our principal and interest. Um, we got our final property and casualty insurance numbers. So that number wasn't accurate at, um, the meeting, not your last meeting, but the meeting two meetings ago. Um, so that number has changed.
Can I just ask a question? The debt number, which number are you talking about on this page here?
So I'll get to that page. So one, two, so the last page. It's like the bottom half or the, um, it's under the parks. Um, you'll see the...
Grand total of budgets?
Nope. You'll see the debt principal, debt principal, interest, principal, oh, that didn't change. There was one band, but you'll see, um, the town hall, the land, the debt exclusion. Um, there were a couple other columns, like maturing debt and interest. That number has changed. So the debt principal exempt, the debt principal interest, um...
Excuse me, I'm not, I'm not seeing it. So on the last page.
It's on the last page.
Oh, second one. Okay. I thought you said last page.
It's the last page on the one I'm looking at.
Okay.
Now, when you say they changed, did they go down?
Yeah.
Okay. That's what I figured.
Yeah, no, so, um, we went through every, either debt exclusion, every loan, everything that the town has. It went through everything to make sure that the number is accurate. This is as accurate as the number has been in the last, I don't know, Jen, several years?
Several years, yeah. Because what happens with the debt exclusions, a lot of times, um, some of them are half and half between the general budget and the sewer budget. And so for the last few years, we've been getting wrong information and they were all put on, the most part, um, the general budget was bearing the burden. Um, so we really sorted that out.
Just as a clarification for everybody, my understanding is that, uh, previous boards of select, select boards have indicated what, where the debt was going to be split. For instance, 50% for, by the sewer department, 50% by the town. So, so you have the, uh, the enterprise fund essentially picking up the debt that was in, here in full, picking up half that debt.
Up until this year, we've been paying full, full free.
Uh, you know, I'm, I'm not sure of that because I'm not sure that we have the, we, we don't see the individual books for the, for the sewer commission.
Right.
So I can't tell you how much they bore.
Right.
Because my understanding was when we were on capital planning, that was being taken out. Now, maybe not budgeted, but the enterprise fund was paying principal and interest on the sewer project.
Certain loan, not...
Right, yeah, right. And one of them was, was this, this, the loan for the, from the state for the sewer project.
Well, yeah, we had...
They split that in half.
Exactly. We've had quite a few debt exclusions for the sewer project. I think one started in 2008. Um, and it was never correctly, you know, divided as the selectmen had. And part of the ballot question, I think, was two of them were half and half. One of them wasn't. And that was a condition of, of the debt exclusions that were passed by the voters.
Yeah. I guess my recommendation would be, you know, you, you might want to look, or at least since you're also the sewer commissioners, you might want to pay special attention to their budget to make sure there's not a budget buster in there too. Because now that, and that, some of that has been allocated to them. Now, they should have enough money, but the question becomes, at what point in time do you break the bank?
Right. How much has been allocated to them?
How much has been allocated? It's been, um, whatever the debt exclusion, um, they have in debt exclusion wise. The, the sewer is not a part of the operating budget. They're their own separate budget. Um, so Scott, um, has been working on that with myself, the town accountant, the assessor. Um, we have numbers there, but we're now, we're waiting for the treasurer collector to put their portion of like the Medicare, their per portion of the unemployment. Um, so it doesn't all fall on the town. Um, they, they pay a portion of that. As you know, um, we've had this conversation before, but just for this conversation, we did budget a $10,000 fee to the sewer enterprise for the work that the town, uh, through the town operating budget, through, uh, town employees doing sewer enterprise work. Um, so that is getting, they're starting there.
Essentially, if I understand this right, the, the sewer budget or the enterprise fund becomes somewhat of a relief valve when you can find and allocate certain expenses that you feel you're bearing for them and they're not doing their fair share.
That's what's happening.
So that's, so that's a little bit of change in policy. So you just want...
Time is money.
Yeah. Well, it's finding money, but also being aware of the fact that, that if, if the enterprise fund goes downside, it's your problem. It's our problem.
I was gonna bring that up. If, if they're separate, but if they go under, we own them.
Well, we do anyway, because if they go into a negative in any year, it automatically goes on the tax rate.
Right.
Right.
And it's been your suggestion, Mr. Corzett, in the capital planning meetings, that we do a, somehow we do a stress test.
I, I would. Only be, and it's not a finance committee recommendation. This would be a capital planning recommendation, simply because if you don't do a stress test on their books, um, let's just say that something seriously fails that we didn't take away, like many alternates that were never, never chosen, which would have given us the ideal sewer, sewer department. But because we, because of the delay in time and the budget increases and inflation and everything else, uh, we, we didn't do all of them. So if for some reason, you know, there's a necessity to do it and it's not being covered any longer once the sewer project is completed, um, it'll come on the enterprise fund to, to, to take care of an emergency or something that we wanted to do but never could do. So I would just think along those lines is if you think you've got a great balanced budget, you also want to make sure the enterprise fund is solid. All indications are that it is, but you want to know how solid, especially if you're gonna lean on that for that relief valve of, you know, expenses. It's, it's, it's a wise move to do. No problem with allocations of covering overheads, so.
Mr. Chair, every month I, when I get the town's, um, year-to-date, like what we've had for expenditures and revenues and everything, I also do get sewers. Actually, I think I shared, shared one of them with you at one point. The sewer budget or the sewer year-to-date?
I think it is some total maybe, but not, not an individual. I don't think I've ever seen it.
So, I, yeah, something, um, so every month I, when I, I go through the town with a fine tooth comb, I do also look at the sewer. Um, but, um, that's where we...
Maybe we look at a, some kind of quasi audit.
I can share all that information with you as well.
All right. Well, we're supposed to be the sewer commissioners. Did you have?
Yeah. How did you come up with the $10,000 to allocate from the sewer to cover the town expenses?
So I don't know if it's gonna cover the town expenses. I wanted to pick a conservative number that we could justify to the state. And then, once we start doing this and it becomes part of our regular practice, we'll be able to figure out what is the actual real number. So this is just the first year we're doing something like this. Again, I picked a very conservative number because that's a number that we can justify to the state. Again, once we have a year of this under our belt and we can actually see, um, because I would have to take a look at every person's salary and figure out how many hours actually are spent where, like between the treasurer, between Sandy and my office, between Jen and those town employees that do the sewer work. So again, I wanted to start with a very conservative number because it's the first year.
Okay, so how are you gonna track this going through the year? Like, what is the plan? Everybody gonna, like, is Jen gonna track her hours? Like, are you, like, this particular week, you do 10 hours of my time?
Probably not on a weekly basis, but probably a monthly basis, yes.
Well, how would you, how would it be accurate going forward if you're not doing it on a weekly basis? Because if it's monthly, you're gonna forget. There's a lot of things that are happening, distractions, priorities, emergencies, stuff like that. It should, I recommend you do it on a weekly basis.
Right, and those individual employee, I mean, however, it makes sense for them. But for me, I'm gonna, um, it's gonna be a monthly basis for my, like, the sheet that I'm gonna create.
Okay.
So, um...
And I think it actually was kind of considered, the hours, kind of ballpark.
Yeah.
So it wasn't just a number out of the air. It was like, you know, how long does it take for the treasurer to deal with anything for the, I mean, for the, um, the, um, what is it?
The billing and stuff like that?
Yeah, the billing and everything. And the same with the collector who hands out her hand and gets it in. Um, and, you know, and then the billing part of it took, takes quite a few hours.
Okay. And the collections, right? End collection?
Yeah, collection as well, yeah. Um, all that, the bookkeeping and everything on that.
And I would suggest that if you, if you wanted to take it really down to the fine tooth comb, you might look at the select board as being commissioners. It's part of that $3,000 budget. You're, you're acting not as selectmen all the time, but you might be also acting as sewer commissioners.
Right.
So you could allocate some of that cost too.
So, um, that was the...
In fact, you're taking care of some of it, watching the improvement.
Yes, yes.
Sorry, dripping your foot in it.
So that's the justification, right?
No, I, I agree and it's good. And I am just saying, the more detailed we can be, the better it's gonna be as far as records go. And we ask for the state, we can ask for more money. We, we'll have the backup data to support all this. So...
I, I was just agreeing with, that's all.
Um, the other changes, major changes that are in this document, um, from that conversation that you guys had a couple meetings ago was, um, there was a decision made to half fund one of Marty's, I'm sorry, one of the highway superintendent's labor positions. Um, we ended up losing an employee that we were gonna interview. Um, we, so this budget will reflect that being a full year, not starting in January. Um, so now we are actively looking to try to fill that position. Um, the other thing that this budget will show that is different is the town clerk, instead of starting in October or January, it's starting July 1st. So those are the big differences. Again, this was, this was in your packet at the last meeting, but it's different from what you saw the name prior to that, so.
What is that uniquely?
Town clerk?
Yeah.
Oh, sure. Uh, first page.
I have a question regarding the DPW. Which line item is it in this sheet?
Oh, sure. Um, so I'll just do the clerk first because that's what I'm, I pull up.
I, I...
Right here, first page. Um, so it looks like from, on my sheet, it's the third page. Um, you'll see the highway and then you'll see the truck driver laborer one, truck driver laborer two.
Excuse me. Third one, okay.
Highway's 44. That figure right there, that's the second, okay.
Yep, yep.
Highway surveyor?
Yep.
Okay. Is that? And then there's laborer one, laborer two.
Yeah.
And it's laborer two that we're talking about here.
How, how many people are on this crew right now?
Uh, we have Marty, we have Mike, we have...
Mike, uh, DeVal, three.
What the heck is...
Grab himself.
Okay.
So including him is three, and then there's one seasonal employee, Mr. Walker.
Yeah.
Um, that's reflected in this budget, um, that he started a little bit earlier to help him get ready for Memorial Day and do some of the...
So does he have an assistant superintendent, Marty?
Yes.
He does?
Matt, yes. Sorry, I couldn't remember his name.
Okay. Does he have a foreman?
No.
All right, so no foreman.
He doesn't have a foreman, right?
No.
All right, so...
No, he was moving the foreman into a regular position.
Okay, so right there, that foreman is, is, it is budgeted, but it's unoccupied. So right now, that's $57,558 that's not being allocated. So even though we made a postponement till January 1st on that budget to hire somebody, he could still hire somebody July 1st because he could pull from that money.
I think that's what he needs to do.
Right.
A little bit more.
So the, uh, initially, when this budget was, uh, formed, there was a mower labor position. That, that position, we took away and instead put money towards seasonal. If you remember that conversation from the finance committee.
Yeah, I, I wanna, I just want to go back and understand this because what I read here is if that, if that foreman's position is not filled right now, is it intended to be filled?
That's...
So it's posted, I mean, the personnel committee has...
So the position that's posted right now is the truck driver laborer position.
One and two, the number, there's two?
No, we have one already in that position, Mr. DeVal.
Okay.
Um, so I think the intention is to fill it. I think he needs the bodies. But just so you're, we're clear here, there was another position budgeted as part of his budget in this budget, the FY25 budget. He had a mower laborer position. He's never filled that as long as I've been here. So that position was the one that was cut and that would also, that also would eliminate the benefits for that position. So we added some seasonal help because we really need things repeated. So that's, that was that rationale.
Good.
Right. So I want to just, on that third page, just follow along with Bill saying. I want to circle the names of the positions that are currently filled.
Sure.
Highway surveyor?
That's, yeah, Marty.
Uh, driver laborer one?
Yes.
Exists?
Yes.
Driver, uh, laborer two is being advertised right now?
Yes.
Yep.
And assistant superintendent?
Yes.
Is filled or not filled?
It's filled.
It's filled.
Okay, so those, the foreman?
Is not filled.
Is not filled. And it will not be filled.
It's the intent to fill it. It's just not filled right now.
We've discussed...
But you're not advertising.
I think you're finding, Mr. Chair. Um, we, we have discussed that that money, some of it is used to increase some of the truck driver pay. So we, even though we're underfunded or not underfunded, but underpaying to raise that level a little bit, to make us more competitive. Yeah. So this...
Six months ago.
We did, I was, I was gonna say, we did that last summer.
But also, we're still, we're still low. We're still low as far as pay goes for the truck driver and stuff like that. So we've talked about this, about using some of this money. So that foreman job is, is not gonna be filled this year. And we're gonna use that money to, to offset, to hire a new truck driver, truck driver laborer two, and also increase their wages if they have to, to get somebody in those positions.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, so then, if, if that money is being used elsewhere, we do still have that line item as a foreman. Do we...
Well, then, it's a question, will that be carried over to next year then? Which would be a problem for the budget.
Yeah, no. Like, we, we have to figure out what he actually really needs. Because he needs more than just two labors.
And it doesn't really matter what we call them.
Right.
You know, he needs the...
Or what you call them is what you'll pay them for your personnel costs.
So we're gonna leave that foreman job in there and that allocation of money there, but...
Empty of people.
Right, but it's, it's a, it's a resource for Marty that he has it in his budget. Because he's gonna need additional people. He might need a third laborer or a truck driver. We don't know. It's, it's, we're gonna talk to Marty and ask him his input. What is he gonna need going forward?
So that $57,000 figure isn't necessarily gonna be completely used?
Correct. Possibly. And it would roll back to free cash.
Correct, possibly. That's, that's...
Well, I mean, I'm not the one in charge. Marty's in charge. I mean, I don't know what his demands are right now. We know he needs a truck driver, plow guy before January 1st. We know that. And so he can definitely hire a guy tomorrow.
If we can find the body.
Right, well...
So my point is, why, why don't we have a truck driver laborer three and get rid of the foreman and put them under there as a lower salary?
I, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I would not recommend doing anything like that at this juncture until we have a conversation with the highway superintendent.
Yeah.
Even, even if we leave it the way that it is right now and, and to get through town meeting, the personnel committee could, we could sit down with Marty and have a conversation and see, you know, if, like, to Mr. Tinker's point, um, if we need to reallocate it somewhere else or if he absolutely needs it.
Create a new position or eliminate a position.
I just want to protect...
You could also take it up in the fall. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
If you take it up in the fall, then fiscal '27 budget will, will be a sizable increase. We don't want surprises like that, correct?
Well, right now, we do not have, um, truck driver laborer number two. And we have allocated $44,767.
Right, and that's, and that's a posted position that you're interviewing for?
We're trying to interview for, yes, it's posted, yeah.
So we have, so technically in this budget, we have $57,558 and $44,767.80 of open positions that are being funded in his DPW.
So, so let me ask this question, Bill.
Sure.
Let's look at the prior year, which is the budget you're working under now. That's there and that person isn't there yet. So you have a $51,268.
Mm-hmm.
All right. But that's going to free cash or is that being used to pay snow and ice?
Well, if we hire somebody next week, we'll use some of that money to finish the year, right? We're finishing the year.
Well, you have the laborer one and laborer two, and you don't have a laborer two hired yet either. And that was budgeted the previous year, right?
Well, it's, it's showing that it was.
Oh, you're talking about this year and the, and all the vacancies and everything? That's what you're talking about?
This year, '25, yeah.
'25?
This, this year?
Yeah.
Yes, we...
You don't, you're not, you're not, those positions are in full, but they're budgeted. They're not filled right now, right?
One of the truck driver, one of them is. There's one vacant truck driver position.
But the foreman is not...
But the foreman is also vacant.
Yes, yes.
So all I'm saying is, if I get this right, 94, almost 94.5?
Yeah.
Is not been spent now, right?
Correct. That's actually...
So what, what...
See, I, I understand that his, his question is my, is my confusion too. We, we have positions that aren't filled, yet we still have them in our budget.
Right. We budgeted for those and we haven't used them yet.
It doesn't mean we haven't tried.
No, I, I understand that.
Please, Laurie, do you want to speak to any of this highway clerk?
Right.
Oh, okay.
Two years, he basically has been working for, with one person because we cannot get the positions filled. Luckily, this year, we've got two positions filled, but we don't have them all filled. Whatever we don't use helps you guys at the end of the year because it's the snow and ice.
Right. That's, that's what I was asking. Okay. That's, that's where your snow and ice coverage is coming from.
Yes.
And Marty just texted me back because I took a picture of the budget and I asked him if this is correct and he said no. So can I all go out, speak to him, and you can move on to a different department, except for police, come back?
Okay.
Agreeable?
Agreed.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So the only other major change was the, um, town clerk position.
Right. Mr. Chair, if I may...
Yes, you have to...
Um, regarding the town clerk, the town clerk is an elected official. Okay, so our bylaws say they address the town clerk position. And it doesn't list the town clerk as part-time or full-time, but past practice, it's been a part-time position. So my point here is, the warrant article, this would have to be addressed through the voters at an annual town meeting. So the nearest one is in the fall to take this up because it's not on the town articles for June 7th. To amend the bylaw, amend information, to put it in there, to make this clerk full-time if it's warranted.
So this is, do you mind if I...
Go ahead.
Um, sorry, um...
It's an elected official.
Right. Thirty, thirty-three thousand in change that he's currently making is not a sustainable wage for someone to work full-time hours. Therefore, the town clerk has to work elsewhere for other hours. I mean, no one can live off thirty. That's just not, so, um, it's in the budget for, um, the full-time beyond what he is currently working to reflect a full-time wage. Um, and that is completely up to your discretion. Um, right now, it's here. Again, after this conversation, I can amend it to what you guys see fit. Um, however, I mean, it's, it's...
Well, if it's not on the town articles, we can't amend anything because that's going to the voters.
It's in the budget, which is an Article 9.
Please hear me out. It's not on the article for January 7th. Okay, to change this position from part-time to full-time. And like I said, the bylaws, it's an elected official. It's an elected position. And we don't have the authority to change anything pursuant to that without bringing it to the voters at an either annual town meeting, through the article, or in the fall. Procedure. That's all.
Uh, Bill?
Yes.
So what you're saying is that according to the town bylaws, right now, the town clerk position is...
An elected official position.
It's a part-time position?
No, it doesn't say part-time and it doesn't say full-time. That's why it has to be amended.
Isn't that the issue, whether it's full-time or part-time?
No. The issue is, it's an elected official, okay, by the public, and we have a town bylaw. And in order to change this to a full-time position, that bylaw needs to be amended. And then that bylaw gets amended through annual and special town meetings.
Correct.
Yes, ma'am.
Does the bylaws say specifically our town clerk, our elected town clerk is a part-time official?
It does not, but past practice, it's always been part-time.
It actually...
So we're changing it, please, let me finish it. Okay.
Um, Paula used to work literally full-time, even though she was only paid part-time when she was town clerk. She used to work Saturdays. She'd stay Monday evenings. She worked, those hours are justified for a full-time town clerk. Unless we have it in our bylaws bill that it is specified as part-time, I can't see where we would have to go to town meeting. And we, what are we changing?
We're changing from part-time to full-time.
But it doesn't say part-time now.
You're just giving him a raise to work the hours that he's working.
Exactly.
Is what you're, that's kind of what you're saying, is that it's a raise to accommodate the hours that he's actually working.
Yes.
Whether you call it part-time or full-time.
Well, there's, excuse me, there's another part to this. If it's, it goes to...
If it goes to full-time, then there are benefits involved. So, I'm thinking this is also a personnel committee kind of a thing.
Mr. Chair?
Where we're talking about setting up a position or increasing a position.
He's already qualified for benefits.
Is he getting benefits?
He doesn't elect to take them, but he does qualify for them and he does have that option currently. Like, if he wanted to bring an open enrollment right now, he could technically sign up for benefits today. He's eligible for them, but he elects to not take them.
Because he works more than nineteen hours a week.
Yeah, and it was set up that way many years... I don't wanna speak to when I wasn't here, but it was set up many years ago that the elected town clerk is eligible for benefits.
I don't know if I can remember that, but...
He doesn't take them, but he's eligible for them.
Well, it's a part-time position.
But why is it?
Well, that I can't speak to, but it is a part-time position.
But I have to say, all of our jobs change over the years. So, what was probably years ago, you know, when it was hard time. It was a Saturday morning job, I think, when Paula started first. And then it's just evolved into full-time. I mean, that's...
But it hasn't. We're talking about making it full-time now.
Yeah, because the hours require that it be full-time.
The work involved.
Yeah.
Right.
Right. I'm not looking to take anything. Thank you. Okay, you've got enough opinions here. Where do you wanna go with this?
Personally, I think we form a committee, okay? That one member from the select board, one member from the finance committee, three members from the public to look at the clerk's role, to assess the costs, the salaries, the benefits, the actual duties, workloads of the position. Compare it with similar-sized towns that have population approximately twenty-eight-hundred, where the typical role is part-time per the Department of Labor and Services. And report back to the select board a written report and recommendation no later than September thirtieth. So, we can put it on the fall in, like, meaning. We can draw up an article, amend the bylaw, and put it to the voters.
We don't even know if we're having one in the fall yet.
We always have one in the fall. We have it twice a year.
We do have one in the fall, and we have had others lately and probably in the near future. So, special town meetings are not that big a deal.
Right.
Can have them right in this room.
Yep.
Well, that's not a bad idea. Well, please excuse me. That's a good idea. I'd love to set up committees. I did share with you that in the first year of this country's existence, they had two-hundred-and-eighteen committees that they started up. So, I don't wanna get into that. Mr. Chair?
What is the committee deciding?
The purpose of the committee shall determine whether the town clerk will warrant conversion to full-time, assess the associated costs with being full-time, including salary, benefits, vacation time, sick time, all of that, okay? Pension. Review actual duties and workload of the position. Compare it with similar-sized towns of hard-lit population, which is, I'm saying approximately twenty-eight-hundred, but sometimes you see three-thousand, sometimes the census say twenty-two-hundred. I mean, so I'm throwing out a number of twenty-eight-hundred because I think that's somewhere in the general ballpark, okay? It's not exactly accurate, but it's close enough. And so, they're gonna meet, they're gonna do the due diligence, and they're gonna decide and create a report and come back to the select board and hand us this report and say, "This is what we think. We think the recommendation is he goes full-time. This is what it's gonna cost the town. This is what he's allocated now for budget. This is gonna be the increase with all the benefits." And then the select board can make their decision based off of that information. And we vote, and we put it on the special town meeting in the fall.
Well...
Go ahead.
If... The way you're talking about the town clerk's position is as if we're hiring him, as if it's an appointed position.
Right, but it's not.
It is not an appointed position.
Right, it's an elected position.
It's an elected position. There is no stipulation as to whether it's full-time, part-time.
That's why it has to go to the voters and the bylaw has to...
Hang on. It's... There's nothing in the bylaw that says whether it's full-time, part-time. If that position, as an elected position, is taking full-time hours, which I know Paula used to put in well over full-time hours. I don't know. I mean, this is a budgetary issue. We're putting in a full-time salary for something that is very much a full-time position. Why do we have to go through all this, Bill? It's already an elected position.
Right, and unfortunately, being elected...
And there's nothing there that tells you, and there is nothing in there that says whether it's full-time, part-time. We can make it a...
No, sir.
Yes, we can. It's a... There's nothing stipulating the number of hours that you have in that position.
Past practice, the job's always been part-time. Past practice is people working full-time.
They're not... They were part-time wages.
They weren't getting paid for it.
Well, so, past practice has been paid for a part-time salary. We're talking about changing it to a full-time salary that affects benefits, vacation, sick time, all that stuff, which we do not have an accurate cost on that. So, I am actually saying, we do our due diligence. We don't rush this. We figure it out. And technology over the last ten years, sir, has changed dramatically. We have high-speed copiers, high-speed scanners, cell phones, fax computers.
It's more label shit. We got stuff coming down from the state.
It's all there.
All sorts of stuff that he has to deal with that we didn't have to deal with ten years ago.
Other towns based on our population has always been a part-time position.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I give my two cents? So, from my understanding, I did have a conversation with the prior select board chair, and it was my understanding, based on that conversation, that the select board a year ago, before I started, discussed this and discussed bringing him to full-time.
Correct.
And it was... The conversation was, it would be... The town would wait till the fall, and we never did that. So, this is a year later of this person waiting with the expectation that the board would take this up. My fear is gonna be that we might lose this person.
Okay.
But I'm just gonna give you all the information that I have, again, based on my conversation with the chair, based on the clerk, and based on my understanding of the situation, that that's where this could go. I don't think it will, but that is in the back of my mind because this person has waited that full year since that conversation a year ago.
Yeah, I agree. That was... That did happen last year.
And I wasn't here, so I asked.
That conversation, sir, so I don't know.
It was before your time.
Well, I was on the board last year.
Mr. Korzak, you got anything to...
I wish I could say something, but because there's a conflict of interest, I won't.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Well, so, we're appointed by the moderator, sir, not the clerk.
No, appointed by the same person we're talking about.
Well, the moderator appoints the finance committee. We were talking about the clerk's position.
I believe that... We were advised that that would be a conflict.
It's too sticky.
Okay.
At the committee, he said it was a sticky area because it's the same person.
Okay.
I'd love to jump in, but it's not worth it.
Write us a letter, would you? Laurie?
I'm back.
I'm back. I have to find tune in tomorrow with Marty, however, a rough numbers. The foreman is not supposed to be on here. The foreman was supposed to be moved down to a lower position. So, Marty wants to keep the seasonal for five thousand. He wants the mower to be, I think he said twenty thousand, but that's a part-time mower. Because if we did it as a full-time at twenty dollars an hour, it would be twenty, over twenty-five thousand.
So, what's the number for mowing?
So...
Twenty thousand, you said, twenty?
So, highway gets twenty ninety hours a year divided by two. So, that's a hundred, I mean, one thousand forty-five hours for a part-time at twenty dollars an hour.
We were getting rid of the mower for the seasonal, and that was the exchange.
But the seasonal hump is five thousand.
So, instead of the foreman, he wants the mower? Is my understanding you?
So, the foreman position, twenty thousand nine hundred of that is going to a mower.
So, instead of the foreman?
All right, so...
All right, thank you, Laurie.
Then, the laborer positions have two different rates here. Currently, the laborer is getting twenty-five dollars an hour. So, if we multiply the two percent for that person, that person should be getting twenty-five dollars and fifty cents an hour times twenty ninety hours.
Laurie, do the fifty-two point two instead of twenty ninety. I fifty-two point two all weeks.
I went through and counted the days and the hours exact.
Just, yeah, if you don't mind, do the fifty-two point two instead.
On what?
Uh, for the weeks instead of the...
Fifty-two point two.
Two, yep. Thank you.
Twenty-five... Oh. Twenty-five point five times fifty-two point two.
Mm-hmm.
That equals one thousand three hundred and thirty-one. Do I multiply that by something? He gets this per hour.
Mm-hmm.
And it's four-odd weeks. Times fifty-two point two.
Oh, that's the...
Okay, it will be off, I believe, but we'll see when we do that. So, Justine thinks it's fifty-three thousand two hundred and forty-four for laborer one.
Fifty-three thousand two hundred and forty-four?
Correct, for laborer one.
Yeah.
And laborer two, if we get a laborer two.
Yeah. So, they'll be getting the same amount, fifty-three, two forty-four?
Correct.
Okay.
That's twenty-five dollars and fifty cents of the work.
All right, so there's ten, roughly ten thousand each increase.
So, that'll be much...
Now, Matt...
Matt, I'm seventy.
The assistant superintendent, we believe his rate is incorrect. He, we believe, and I have to double-check this when I get back to the office.
Okay.
And doing it, Justine's way is should be sixty-two thousand oh thirty-nine ninety-one.
There you go. Okay, sixty thousand eight eighty-one seventy.
So, you have fifty-seven, five, five, eight, sixty, that we're gonna take twenty thousand dollars from for the mower.
Mm-hmm.
And then I have to subtract the other differences.
Roughly ten, ten, another twenty. So, that brings it down to seventy-two.
So, I think we're giving you about thirteen to fifteen thousand dollars that you can use or you can share in our other line numbers.
Right, or increase the truck dollar by maybe... Yeah.
I think if we make it simple, we take the bottom line total highway, the before and after would be a lot more helpful because you got so many numbers I've written down right now. I'm not sure. It's like a Rubik's cube. So, the fiscal twenty-five budget was five eighty-seven, three ninety. The twenty-six recommended is six forty-one, seven thirty-four. With all that we just said, what is that number now?
I have all the right numbers that she read. I just have to enter it.
Well, this is not on here.
I know.
Right, but it would still be the same numbers because...
You're gonna make it count to the same number.
Yeah, because the remaining thirteen or fourteen thousand is still in there. So, that bottom last number...
Will stay the same.
Stay the exact same.
Okay, all right. That's fine.
Good.
In aggregate, you know, the number, the highway department number is what we would be concerned about.
Right.
If you move those things around as long as there are no additional... No additional impacts because of hiring the benefits, that might be something you want to take into account. Because I'm assuming that benefits is somewhere else in here.
Yep.
Right.
But they would...
But there's two positions that haven't been filled, therefore, you're not paying benefits on them currently.
They're already accounted for this year and next year, yes.
All right, all right. That's...
Good.
You had a question over here. Yeah, that additional money, you just gotta plug it in somewhere else. So, if you add it to snow and ice theoretically, that thirteen or fourteen thousand.
You could.
Yeah.
Well, because if you just take all that out, you're gonna end up with a lower number here.
Essentially, it will go to snow and ice next year.
But you're gonna eliminate the foreman position.
So, we'll give you better numbers tomorrow morning by eight o'clock?
I already... I have them. I need to start doing motions and stuff tomorrow, so just send it to me. But I'll check it with what I just...
I just wanna make sure that six forty-one, seven thirty-four stays the same.
It's gonna stay exactly the same.
Let's make sure it does.
So, that's our financial bottom line, so the same.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, there's one other big change, if you'd like me to go on to the last one, was the surplus overlay is in the budget and not in the article. But I can let the assessor speak to that.
So, the overlay surplus is... Have you seen the motions yet? We're gonna be raising X amount and using the sixty-two thousand whatever change of overlay surplus for the... For this budget.
To get under two and a half.
To get under two and a half, yeah.
They haven't seen the motions because they're not... I need numbers to put in there before I send it to them.
Okay. So, you'll see that we're gonna raise in taxation X amount, and we're going to use sixty-two thousand five hundred and something in overlay surplus for our working budget.
Right.
Very last page.
I will be reading that on the last page or my last page.
I don't know.
It's a...
I don't have a last page.
Sixty-two thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars.
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven. Right there.
Now, question, Mr. Chair. Is this the money that we allocated, forty-two thousand of it, to stabilization fund and the remaining twenty thousand to free cash that has to get approval by the board to spend?
Right.
Oh, my goodness.
Is it still the same?
Yeah, I think so.
So, if there's articles for that?
We're not... We're not taking it. You're taking it.
Well, the budget is taken.
The budget is taken. So, the thing was, the selectmen could have taken it and used it somewhere else.
Exactly.
As it is, the budget is taken.
And what happens next year?
Yeah.
Would you consider a larger negative deficit?
Perhaps.
Well, I mean, if all of the things being equal, it will. Some perhaps.
I can...
Right, it will.
Yeah, we got more insurance coming in.
Mr. Chair, I can speak to that if you'd like.
Please.
So, we are... We're actually gonna have a savings, hopefully, in insurance next year. We stayed with Maya this year, but next year, we're looking at other options to go with the school's insurance. So, there'll be a cost savings there. It's too early for me to tell you how much. We're looking at other ways to bring in revenue. As you know, revenue, I mean, those are fluid. And we are looking at some savings in all the insurance and everything in that office because there have been some serious substantial errors in that department that we're fixing now, so next year, we can have more accurate numbers and that won't hit our free cash. So, we are looking at...
Possible income and revenue that we don't have yet.
And fixed.
That we don't have. That we don't have.
Which every...
Right.
But also, too, we're gonna have real, actual numbers in the treasurer's office that are done right because we've had errors where it's actually affecting our free cash number, so...
I would... In this conversation that I had with the assessors, I understand this, right? The projections for revenue are conservative.
Yeah.
Yes.
Very.
So if they are conservative in their opinion, uh, they have far more experience on handling that number than anybody else. So I would say that would be an assurance that, that we've got, we've got a relatively safe... Yeah, well, yeah, except that, you know, if sixty-two thousand appears as a cost next year and it's not on the revenue side, that's, 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 takes probably all of your conservatism out.
Mr. Chair, I have one more thing I forgot to mention. Um, on the warrant for this annual town meeting, there's an article to raise our mail tax, so we will also have that little bit of revenue for, um, and then I will, I wanna work with Mr. Tanker for not this year, but next year on the occupancy tax. So I wanna work...
Clamp and campaign, tourists.
Airbnb.
Yeah, short-term rentals, stuff like that.
We also have an article on the annual town meeting this year for tallings, so any, I hate to say leftover money, we can't cash. It just kinda sits in a fund that doesn't go to our operating.
You call that tallings?
Tallings, yeah.
Yeah, when people have to check, cash to check or something.
Yeah, it's my, it's a mining term. Yeah, it's what's left after the...
It's supposed to be left over, absolutely.
So, uh, we have an article in the annual that way, after a year, the town will be able to collect that money. Um, so there's...
There's hope.
We're, we're just, we're trying to be creative here and it's not, other towns do these things, so it's not like we're, we're not like, oh, we're gonna be the first, but it is different ways to bring in money.
My recollection in your revenue projections was, for instance, the meal taxes not a big number. Not even close to be a big number. The increase that you would expect from that would be hundreds. Hundreds of dollars, maybe a thousand dollars.
No.
Is the total ten thousand dollars?
Actually, more than that.
It's ten thousand dollars of meals?
It's amazing, yeah, it's amazing.
This is what we're doing right now.
Now, the meals tax, is that gonna be a total of one percent?
Um, yes.
Okay.
We would like it to be.
We'd like it to be, um, we have a little issue, I'm going back and forth with council on that, um, with the municipal empowerment act, um, so we would like it to be, I'm hundred, I'm ninety-nine point nine percent sure it's going to be. Um, the least it will be is point seven five, which it will still be an increase over our point five right now currently.
Right, but we can go up to one percent.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
We're just waiting for the blessing.
Right, but right now, our collections are about ten thousand dollars.
Okay. At three quarters of the change.
It's at point five right now.
Point five.
Yep.
Point five.
They definitely need an extra ten.
It's just something.
Yeah.
Every little bit helps.
It, it surprises me how much we make on that. It's all money coming into the town anyway.
Yeah.
And, yeah, you'll have a couple, um, other things coming before the board in the next few months, um, of the solar.
Solar, the cure search is coming.
Yes, we're...
Maybe with the greenery, there might be some changes.
There'll be, there's room for, there's a lot of assumptions being made for next year that might make that conservative number, still conservative.
Right, right.
Maybe the...
So what is our projected total revenue from this round?
A projected total revenue, that, that is unknown at this time, I need to wait a few more months to kinda see what you guys decide to do with certain things, like the vacant properties, like, uh, going with a lease for those solar, so I can't sit here and say that for sure because there's a lot of unknowns, because I'm not in your brains.
Well, we've gotta face decisions on revenue and not like what-ifs scenarios.
Do you have an idea?
I, I missed the whole conversation.
Total income revenues next year?
So it's too early to tell.
Oh, I don't. I don't, it's just no, not at all.
There's too many unknowns, yeah.
Well...
And a lot of it depends on you.
But, you know, that wouldn't be a bad thing for the board, you know, if you're talking about the things, the last meeting about focusing on things, maybe on the revenue side might be worth a few minutes of every select board meeting to talk about revenue opportunities.
Right.
Mr. Chair?
Like, like what she's talking about. Because simply, if you have, if you have one in the budget, I believe there's, I wanna say five thousand dollars for the sale of one of those buildings that we own, if you sold it to Penn, here's, here's an example.
And I put thirty for the three buildings as a very conservative number.
Right. Hopefully, we'll be able to unload one, get it on the tax roll.
And start moving forward, yeah?
Mr. Chair?
Bless you.
Yes, ma'am.
I, um, I have started a five-year, um, a five-year projection, I'm just not comfortable sharing it with the board until I have more things. Um, since, and I, my focus was getting through this town meeting, just so you know.
Sorry, I got a wish list.
Even like the solar, you know, it's three years old.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you won't have a projection on that next year?
Uh, no, we have a lease though.
And also, a couple other solar proposals might not even happen.
Right.
It might be yanking those.
Yep. You know, cure search came in and then everything stopped for four or five years.
You got a lot of material.
Alright, so what else? We go back to town clerk.
Town clerk, question.
Have we discussed, have we discussed everything else?
Those are all the, yeah, the changes from, yeah.
So we're agreeing finally on numbers here tonight.
Yes.
And the budget gets voted on at town meeting by the resident, so...
Right, but we vote to approve these numbers.
We have to agree on these numbers.
Right.
Which will change even over the course of next week.
I hope not, but my goal is to, again, when I get into work tomorrow, is to finalize the motions for the three of you, get all that over to you, and then hopefully start printing the budgets as part of the warrant for the town meeting on Saturday. I don't wanna wait any longer.
Alright, well, the numbers are usually fluid at the last minute, so...
Right.
Cut that out.
Just make everything sad.
Finance can make a question here.
Sure.
Um, so, all the things you talked about and all the changes happening, are we still working towards the twenty thousand dollar, and is this number, these numbers real at all?
Yeah. Those are real.
I mean, I'm, but we just changed that, but we still have a twenty thousand dollar problem.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, that is a, that is...
That's a twenty thousand dollar favorable.
Favorable, yes, yeah.
That was over.
No, it's under.
Under. Yeah.
And that gives the way.
We want that gap.
Right, and this is, you, you have scorecard to keep up which budget, you know, is the finance, but the last time we talked, the last time you guys voted, this, a lot of work's gone into this before tonight. It's the stuff you guys have been doing, so this is, this is a relatively new compared to the one that we looked at.
It was new to the select board at their last meeting.
Which I wasn't in.
Actually, it might have been.
No, I don't think it was.
No.
Go ahead, sure. Well, if we apply these numbers and then we put it to the balance sheet and everything, through the finance committee, through Chris's numbers, and we're gonna have a negative hundred thousand, hundred forty-five thousand this year. Just putting it out there. I mean, and now being conservative.
Yeah, let's, let's add those line items up right now, because that's an important, it's an important concern. That was the concern at the last meeting.
And that's why, we, because my understanding, the town has fixed revenue, and it's two and a half percent based off of the property taxes, it's fixed.
Property tax.
Right, but that's a fixed revenue. And so we gotta kinda stay within that revenue, we can't spend more in that revenue. And I know we have other revenue for mail stacks, equipment and stuff like that, but that's, that's the big focus and that's what the finance committee was trying to get through, and that's why we made the cuts we made, so we could actually put money in stabilization and start applying that money to capital projects that would save us money in the long run on maintenance and these emergency calls and all this, and get, and take that money and start using it to save money.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, to Mr. Taker's point about putting money into stabilization, which I a hundred and ten percent agree with, we need to save, however, if we don't start accurately funding these budgets, we're not gonna have the free cash to ever fund stabilization. So I, I mean, you've heard me say this, I said this at the last, how many meetings? We have so many overspent accounts that weren't funded appropriately, that I cannot sit here and tell you what we're gonna have for free cash next year because we have so many overspent accounts, if we don't properly fund the budget to operate the town of Hardwick.
Okay, so we haven't, I heard that, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Would you, uh, like to take us through those numbers about the hundred thousand dollars next year?
Well, it, it's, the first question I think of that and a big number is the pension, what, this is the one that killed us this year.
Yeah, and it will be more next year.
Well, it'll be more next year, you need to be really cognizant of what that increase is gonna be.
Actually, it's gonna be roughly the same number as it is lit this year, it's gonna fluctuate slightly, but it's not gonna be significant. This is the number that we should have had all along, that we weren't paying.
Right.
Unless we go out and hire two, three, four more people, that number's gonna stay relatively the same.
For the first time, it's in.
Yes, correct, correct.
That's a budget buster.
Yes, understood.
I'm a hundred percent, I'm a hundred percent.
So that's where we end up in the hole next year? Because of the, the insurance, the retirement?
Well, if we carry, if we carry this budget forward and there are no budget busters, nothing that could, you know, that you, for instance, in the previous discussion we had, there was, uh, half of the town clerk, for instance, was delayed until January, and the labor was delayed until January. Those are really dangerous things that you, if you do, you gotta remember, that number doubles the following year because you've pushed it out to make the numbers balanced, but not pushed, but pushed it out to another fiscal year. So you wanna, you wanna look for those in here that are, that are understated, only, simply because that's the way we wanted to, to make the balanced budget. So if there's any more like that, we need to know them, I don't know, I don't know what they are. I know the pension plan was the one that sunk us, you know, if you look at the school budget, we were very fortunate, we had less students and a much smaller increase on, on the school budget. School budget right now is only forty-six percent.
That's amazing.
Yeah.
That's, yeah.
Yeah, that's, now that's amazing, but maybe, it may be amazing, but it may be coincidental that the act, the school population is going down in Hardwick. Because we really didn't, that number gets decided on by a per student allocation per town.
Right, and that can change, that could be a, a surprise disaster.
Similarly, so if you wanna talk about those surprises, you look at Pathfinder School, three students last year, five students this coming year. But that was a big hit too.
And we've sent kids to Smith and Essex.
Right, so, so again, there are certain icebergs in, in any budget that you, you can say would likely be ice underwater, but there's some that we don't know, we don't know how big they are. So we wanna minimize those or at least really focus on those, so that's why I'm, I'm kinda happy that we get them. Highway departments squared away so that we don't have any misunderstandings about that. Because if, you had my head spinning here for a couple of minutes, so I think we're...
We're recording.
Yeah, if the bottom line, if the bottom line doesn't change, then that's fine, I don't know how you manage that budget, but that's Marty's problem and your problem, so I, I'm gonna say, that's what you agree on and there, you know, except for Snow and Ice, which is the iceberg that we deal with year in and year out.
Every year.
Which is funded by free cash.
Ninety-nine percent of the time though, I cover at least half of my override or more.
Right, right.
Um, I don't overspend, I have a budget and I run frugal.
I know you do, I know you do, I know. There's nobody looking at that.
Don't come back on my help. I can't do it.
I don't think they did.
No.
No.
No, we worked on them and it just...
Actually, the money was in here all the time.
All along, the money was.
Right, it was just, it was just...
It was a misconception of what was going on.
Yeah, right, when Laurie called me, it was, uh, just in different places.
We could feel the heat over the phone.
Yeah.
Probably.
No, I have a, I have a phone that's melted.
Yeah.
Oh, my God.
Just one, just one?
So I listen to it one at a time.
Alright.
But, no.
Thank you for...
Thank you.
Getting back to the clerk, how do you wanna handle that? Do you want a review committee? Do you wanna establish a town clerk review committee? Mr. Chair?
I don't know if we can get, if we can really understand what he does.
Sure, good. His core responsibilities, there's, it's spelled out in mass general law and, and all that. Clerk certificates, death certificates, it's all there.
Well, right, right. And other things come up and...
Well, but the, the core role of the clerk, I mean, spelled out.
My vote would be no.
We're not voting, sir.
No, I, I understand, I, I do not think we need to go to that extent for the town clerk, I think the town clerk's position is, is pretty well-defined and I don't, and I see it as being a full-time position. They've been doing full-time work all this time, I don't see there being an issue.
He works part-time hours, just, his hours are posted and they're part-time. And not full-time.
Isn't that an elected position?
Yes, it's an elected position, that's why we're asking.
Should the town president's vote on whether it should be part-time, part-time, or full-time?
Correct, and I brought that up.
I don't think we made that decision, he's an elected official and he works.
Right.
And that's the end of the story.
So the elected positions don't have a set hour?
There's nothing that I see when anybody's elected with...
Five hours to get the job done or ninety-five hours to get the job done, he works until the job's done.
So how do they do it? They just vote on his salary?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. And what, well, it's, you know, it used to be, Paul used to work so many extra hours. But really now, he's gonna be paid for those hours that he, you know, should be working.
My concern is, it is an elected, like, elected official position through the bylaw, and whether the bylaw says full-time, part-time, it doesn't say anything. The town has run in the past on part-time pay.
Hasn't though, well...
And so going forward, it should be on an article to change the bylaw, to establish full-time, and we, and the people vote on it. That's the proper procedure for this, not the select board, not pressure, not anything. We have a committee, we do the due diligence, we review, see if it's even warranted, what's the cost, what is the true cost of the town so we can make responsible decisions.
I'm not gonna take his side, but I'm gonna explain that he gets the job done, whether it's in thirty hours or twenty-five hours. I do the same thing. You know how many hours I give this town a year?
No.
This year I gave what, three hundred and twenty hours?
Right.
You know, so I mean...
We, we understand what you do.
Right.
You do.
Right, so maybe he can't afford to give the hours, you know? Um, maybe he's burnt out.
We don't know.
So, you don't know.
Right.
So you need to see what he does for hours.
Right, that's why I recommend establishing a committee.
Record it, alright, do it, but this whole thing of, you know, I don't know.
It's, it's called fiscal responsibility. We just can't throw it at the taxpayers because we, he does a great job.
Not send it to the taxpayers.
Well, that's where it's gonna go, it's gonna go back to the taxpayers.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so whatever the board decides to do tonight, it is always, it can still always come up on the floor of town meeting. You know, you've seen these things happen before, so the board just do what you guys think is right, um, but at the end of the day, it is up to the taxpayers and they will decide on the town meeting floor, so...
But it's not on the articles.
It doesn't need to be.
I guess it does.
It doesn't.
It doesn't.
Okay. I disagree.
Any, anybody can take one of the line items from the budget and amend it. And that's the right of the vote, it's be able to do that. And, and we do a line item budget so they could pick out Jen Calinda's predecessor's salary and they could adjust that to zero or whatever they would like to do it.
Four hundred thousand?
But Jen Calinda's salary is not in a bylaw and you're...
I don't think it's in a bylaw.
Right, but the town clerk is.
I don't think it is.
It's Article twenty of the town bylaws.
And what does that bylaw say?
Well, I don't know if it's current, outdated, or anything, so it just says the town clerk and his position and what he's supposed to do and it doesn't say part-time, it doesn't say full-time.
Right, right.
That's what, but it's supposed to, to amend a bylaw, it's supposed to be on the articles, and it's not on the articles. That's all I can tell you.
So...
And I recommend, I recommend... And I recommend, I recommend we do a review committee, because other towns with population, the clerk's role is based on population. Barry has a full-time clerk, their population is 5,500. Every other town you look at, where they're 2,800, 1,000, 1,500, their town clerk is part-time. Our town clerk has been part-time, our population hasn't gone to 5,000, hasn't even come near that number. But, am I saying, no, I don't want it to go full-time? I'm just saying, we should analyze the position and make an informed decision. And in order to do that, we put it off till November, or we have an answer by September, right, and we, and if it comes back and says, hey, we wanna do X, Y, and Z, yes, it warrants it, we amend the bylaw in the article, we put the article, and we put it before the voters.
Can I, can I ask one question?
Sure.
I wanna make sure, since we can't render an opinion on the, on the $35,000, should you decide to do that, there's, then you're doing exactly, you gotta have something in the budget in case you decide from that committee that you're gonna go ahead with that.
Mm-hmm.
You get a number in there.
Right.
So, so, just for the purposes of the budget, a number will probably be there whether you say yes, whether you say no.
Right.
Because it's gonna have a number there.
We can keep the line item.
And not spend it.
And not spend it.
That I can agree to.
Well, what about a committee?
The committee, yeah.
I need a motion.
I'll give you a motion.
No, all right, you already gave me a motion. I mean, you read that.
Right.
I'd like to see what Jeff is thinking.
Okay.
You see, I...
See, we just had, we just had agreement.
Yeah, we just had agreement. I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, my, I am not sure what we're changing with this committee. We're, I, I know, we're analyzing the position, whether the, you can do it full-time, whether it should be full-time, whether the town can afford a full-time position. But, we're changing a bylaw, and the bylaw is just an elected position.
Right.
And that can be whatever it happens to be. If the present town clerk starts putting in 40, 50 hours a week, he, he's entitled to do that. And I would feel it would behoove us to pay him that sort of thing, that sort of money for a full-time position. That, and I don't...
So...
What would this committee be looking for?
The committee, if I may answer, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
This committee would determine the role, whether it warrants full-time or not, just based on what actual things are being done. What is needed? What is the job, what is the job? Okay? And it's basically gonna look at other towns with similar populations. Do they have a full-time clerk, or do they have a part-time clerk? Yes or no? And then the salary, what are the benefit costs? What are the vacation, the holiday, the sick day, the pension? All that is not in $35,000. That's just going from 33, we're adding 33, so we're at 66. But what is the other cost to those benefits? What, what does he get? Does he get four-week vacation? Does he get three? What is it? Okay? So, this committee is gonna analyze all that, and get back to us, and let us know, and give us all this information.
Again, that would make sense if this was a, perfect sense, if it was an appointed position.
Well, I'll address the bylaw part of it, amending the bylaw, okay? One of the things we would do is, Ryan's elected, okay? We would want it to be an appointed position going forward, after. I mean, it would be Ryan's job, but I'm saying going forward, let's say Ryan, down the road, Ryan quits, or he wants to leave, or he goes to Greener Pastors with more money, okay? Or, very next year, somebody could run against him, and he gets unelected.
That's the trick.
Right, that's the trick, right? So, I recommend we make a, this committee would also review that, and say, should it be appointed position under the select board?
I think we're the committee that has to decide this.
Right.
And I can't agree with going for an appointed structure, so...
Oh, I think we should have the rest of the stuff.
Well, I think I'm looking for a motion, man. Let's make a motion and decide this.
I'll make a motion if that's acceptable.
Make your motion.
All right, I'll make the motion. I move to establish a temporary advisory committee consisting of five members to study and evaluate the scope, responsibility, and compensation of the town clerk position. The committee shall include, you said, one member of the select board, one member of the finance committee, and three members of the public. If you wanna change that, we can change that. The purpose of this committee shall be to determine whether the town clerk role warrants full-time, assess the associated costs, including salary benefits, vacation time, sick time, all that stuff, what does he get, review the actual duties, workloads of the position, compare this with similar-sized towns. Hardwick has a population approximately 2,800, where the role is typically, you have been, part-time. Report, create a report, report back to the select board, a written report, recommendation by no later than September 30th, for potential action for fall town meeting.
Mr. Chair, right?
No, please, stop.
I, I don't think I can second that.
Well, okay, the motion dies from lack of a second. Well, Mr. Chair, you can second it if you still wanted to.
I could, yeah.
Just bringing that, reminding you.
Thank you.
Okay, no problem.
Well, I think, I think we go on with, with what's in front of us instead, and follow the numbers that are on the page. I could get a motion to do that.
I'll move that, now, we're accepting the budget as we've amended it tonight to submit to town meeting on Saturday. I'll make that motion.
Okay. I'll second it. Discussion?
So, what is our negative impact going forward? How much are we gonna be out of budget? Is it 160, 170? How much? What is that number?
In the future?
Next year.
Next year.
Next year.
We're trying to right the ship here, and this isn't righting the ship. This is hitting the iceberg. So, I just wanna know what that number is.
There's no telling.
No, there is telling.
We've been presented the budget. What's wrong with it? Help me understand it.
What's wrong with the budget?
It's, importantly, at the bottom line here, $20,000 circles. Now, I got a little nervous when I saw the highway numbers moving all over the place, and I see my, my, I'm pretty scared of that, because it's only, I thought this was clean. It's not. Okay, so, what do you know of Bill? Do you have some...
Well, I'm basing it off of Chris Colros's financial numbers, where he says, hey, we don't do this, we don't do that. We cut out $98,000 at our last meeting, and now we're putting that 98,000 plus back into it. And, and then, even on those numbers, we're at negative 45,000, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, overlay is one of them. We know that.
So, I'm just concerned, we add the 98 back into the budget, which we have, okay? So, next year, we're looking at, we had a negative 45,000 at the end of next year with the, the $98,000 cut taken out. So, next year, we're looking at the 98,000 plus the 45,000. What's that, 136, 140-something? Thousand negative. It's a big number for this town.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
That's not accurate, and I don't know where Mr. Colros got some of his numbers. Like I said, we looked at the debt, and that is not...
Well, numbers have changed in the last couple of weeks.
Yes.
Doing this document here.
But that's just my concern, sir, that's it. I mean, numbers, not numbers. They add up, they don't add up. It's, numbers don't lie. It's like a universal language.
This is the best budget that you've seen in recent years that's gotten us under two and a half in a comfortable manner.
I'm gonna call for a vote.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed?
No, I said aye, all agree, but I don't agree. I'll go no. I'll go no for the record.
We can't, we can't take a vote, 'cause we don't have a call, so, what we need is this bulletproof numbers. And then, I'll review with Chris, and then we'll take it up.
And we need revenue numbers.
At the, at the annual meeting, we'll have a, we'll have to have a, we'll have to post a meeting.
No, we were planning on posting a meeting.
Right, we're open for eight o'clock.
Yeah, so we'll take it up then.
One other thing, Mr. Chairman, we decided.
Sure.
The town copier.
I don't have to scare it over.
No, the town copier starts on us $2,800 a month. I'd like to make a motion to have that removed by June 30th.
Don't have the money until July 1st, and you want it in July.
We have it in capital. You can buy it now.
I can't use capital.
We have it in capital.
I need town meeting for that.
Can we use capital for a new copier?
No.
You gonna own it?
Yeah.
It's an asset?
Yeah.
Well, it's an asset. You can, you can own an asset.
Mr. Chair?
You have to tell me where you're gonna take the money out, but there's, there's capital stabilization.
That requires a town meeting vote to access. So, either way, I can't access it until July 1st. So, no matter what, I still have to buy it July 1st.
And you were talking about having another special sometime within the next month.
At, on June 30th.
Yeah.
Again, I wouldn't have a copier until July 1st. But it's out of capital stabilization. That vote wouldn't, even if we had a special, I can't access it until July 1st.
Well, how about we do this? We take it out of the IT, okay? We buy the copier, we're gonna pass this budget, we have a budget of 30-plus thousand in IT. We use the $8,000 that it's gonna cost us.
That's the plan.
Okay?
Good.
And, but we buy it now. We don't wait till July 1st to start removing this. We start saving now, because...
You hate that, huh?
I can't.
Well, put it this way, sir, by the time we actually get rid of it, we could've bought two copiers, or three copiers. So, we blow our budget right there in IT by not removing it.
I can't until July 1st. This is the FY '26 budget, which starts July 1st. I'm a negative in IT in this current fiscal year. I cannot do anything until July 1st. We have no money.
You can get rid of the copier.
And then not have one for...
Then I won't have one, though. That's the problem.
I, it has to be a month from now. It just has to be, like, it has to...
That's 2,800. That's three, almost $3,000. We brought this up in March, so add it up.
Why brought it up in March?
For $2,800, you'll buy some printers, some $400 printers, you piece of cake. Spend one month's worth of payment, you can solve your summit.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. With all due respect, Bill, I think, I think our hands are kinda tied.
No.
I, I agree with you.
Government doesn't have to be inefficient. We can be efficient. And sitting around paying 2,800 a month is a waste of money on a copier.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, good. Let's get rid of it.
But we have to wait. From what I'm seeing, we have to wait.
Exactly how many months?
Less than a month.
July 1st.
July 1st.
So, why aren't the proposals and quotes going out now, replacement?
'Cause I don't need to do that if, if I'm getting on the state bid list. I have to get through town meeting.
Can we get a motion to get this started, and get those quotes?
It is started.
Do we have a list of quotes?
I'm getting the state bid list.
I'll make a motion to get a request for proposal for a printer.
I don't need to do that. It's under $10,000. Are you a procurement officer?
Well, with the package, with the package, it's $3,000. So, it's $11,000, sir.
Stop.
Budgeted.
Let's try to get the numbers together and make a plan, and go over it at our next selectance meeting.
Monday?
We'll be ready to order something two weeks late.
I can't do that for Monday.
What?
I can't have anything ready for Monday. My, my entire week is getting ready for Saturday. I'm not gonna have it ready for Monday.
Can you? A request for proposal?
No, you don't need a request for proposal. You just need a list of specifications.
I already have it. I've sent it to her, via email.
All right, let's go over it at the next meeting.
All right, no problem. Okay. All right? All right, anybody else?
Nope.
How about you?
Any open forum questions? We didn't have that at the beginning.
Well, we weren't planning, we didn't post anything.
I'll wait through the meeting adjournment, and I would just like to ask you guys to keep some...
Might as well ask.
Okay. Put some pressure on the lawyers to keep this moving on the page building. I'm just asking. It seems like, I, should our lawyer talk to your lawyer? But that costs money. We don't wanna do that. Should we, I don't get this facilitated.
I sent a follow-up email to the board a few days ago. Oh, we did? Yes, Jen, thank you.
Good night, Jen.
Good night, Jen.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, guys.